Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council for Tuesday, September 26, 2017. We do have a quorum present, a minimal amount required. But it's quality, not quantity, that's required. So we have both the quality and the minimum number here. All right. With that, I'll now turn it over to members of the city council to see if they have any information and/or follow-up requests. Councilman Waring, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So tomorrow night, Wednesday, September 27th, at 6:00, we're going to have City Manager Ed Zirker at our monthly district meeting. So again, 6:00 at Paradise Valley Community Center, which is just north of Paradise Valley High School at Fortieth Street and Bell. So on the west side of Fortieth Street, north of Bell. Love to have you out, ask questions of the city manager about the pressing issues of the day, and appreciate you doing it, Ed. Thank you. Again, I always remind people, these meetings are taped, so that's Wednesday, September 27th. If you watch this a few days from now, you missed it, don't go. You can't travel back in time to see our meeting, Wednesday, September 27th. Thank you.
All right. The good news, if you miss this one, Councilman Waring has many meetings in his district, so there'll definitely be another one. Other members of the council, information or follow-up requests? Councilman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we want this to be quick. I want to remind everybody, October is the Pioneer Harvest Fest out at the Pioneer Museum. And it's Saturday and Sundays in October, beginning October 14th. Has family photos, gun shows, pumpkin patch, music, food, gold panning, hay rides, trolley rides, and a lot more. To get tickets, go to pioneeraz.org. They have adults for $8, youth 3 to 16, $5, and under 2, free. And everybody goes home with a free pumpkin. And secondly, District 1 Breakfast is this Friday, September 29th. Guest speaker is Inger Erikson, going to talk about what's going on in parks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Williams. Councilman Gallego?
Thank you. Happy National Voter Registration Day, so make sure if you know anyone who needs to get their updated, their information updated or register to vote, today's a good day to do it. Also want to wish everyone a happy Jewish New Year and a happy 70th anniversary to the Phoenix Indian Center. Flood control is an issue that's very important to our district, and there's two big flood control meetings next week, October 3rd at Betty Fairfax and at Chavez on the 5th. Both meetings start at 6:15, and we hope people in the community can make it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
Good afternoon. I would like to start off with, first, thank you for re-electing me. So thank you in believing in me and in investing in me. The second item is Kahootz Foundation fundraiser. A few weeks ago, I took part in an epic lip sync battle as part of the event to raise money for Kahootz Foundation. And in addition to having the best routine, I was glad to share the stage with other community leaders. Next year, I'm hoping to share the stage with Councilwoman Valenzuela and Councilwoman Gallego, and maybe recreate a routine together. But Kahootz has established itself as a leader in the shared and high-tech economy and is quickly emerging as one of the strongest local economic development trailblazers in our city. So I want to applaud them for continuing their work in the community. GAIN events will begin weekends of October 14th and October 21st. And as everyone knows, there's a variety of community events, gatherings all over the district. Get out and show your support for block watchers, neighborhoods, and our police and fire departments. And then we have the grand opening and dedication of the new visitor center at Indian Steel Park, Saturday, October 14th at noon. Come and celebrate the restoration and reopening of another historical landmark on the grounds of the old Phoenix Indian School. We will also take the time to recognize and reflect on the importance of this site to our city's rich history and the contributions of Native people towards our community and heritage as a whole. So many thanks to Native American Connection, Phoenix Indian Center, and our own Parks and Recreation Department for making this possible. Once again, Lost Lake Festival at Indian Steel Park. That event will be from October 20th through October 22nd. More than 40 musical acts over three days on multiple stages, signature culinary experiences, the best in local food, cocktails, breweries, and interactive games, local artists and artist-ins. And there are single-day tickets on sale now, and it's also family-friendly. The Phoenix Children Museum will be putting together a Silly Slope Kids area. Kids under 10 do not need a ticket to the festival. And then the Aunt, hold on, the Aunt Rita's AIDS Walk, Arizona, that's Sunday, October 22nd. It's AIDS Walk, Arizona's 10th anniversary. We're building a team, we'll be meeting at Third Avenue and Washington Street in downtown Phoenix. So step up, be counted with me and my team. I'm hoping to build a team of 150 walkers. So if you want to join me, please let me know.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And I want to be sure it's clear, because at the beginning of your comments, you did challenge Councilwoman Valenzuela to participate next year in the lip sync challenge for Kahootz. Councilman, do you accept the challenge, right now, here and now, to do lip syncing next year?
Mayor, I accept, if you accept my challenge, to also be in that competition.
Oh, yeah. Oh, look at this.
Crickets. Okay, we'll add that to a future agenda. All right.
I have one more item.
Please.
This pen that I'm wearing, right here, since you cannot put the whole term DACA here, this says DACA embrace. And this is from a constituent mine in District 4, Doug Thomas. And what he wrote is, "I love my country, but I cannot see the justice of repealing DACA." So thank you, Doug, for doing that.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilman Zizil, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to follow up to on the October 14th GAIN events, if you just call my office, we'll have a list of them. We're still compiling the list, probably won't have it for another week or so. But it's a great opportunity for individuals to get to know their neighbors. They talk about safety issues, they talk about issues that are going on in their neighborhood, zoning, things that might be happening. It's fantastic. And it's always a warning ahead of time, but I'm never able to hit every single one of those. When you do try, the city manager and I know what it's like, because when you do try to hit a lot, everyone gets upset because you've only been there for five minutes. And so generally, as a general rule, we try to split those up. But they're great events for neighborhoods, they're great events to get to know your neighbors, and they're great events to talk about safety. The other, if you've been following some of this thing that's been going on with the water rate hikes and the water rate pricing, and my district is really up in arms right now about what's happening with their water bill. And it's justifiable, so. I mean, if you look at it, you know, we always talk about what water rates do, it may only be 2% this year, 3% next year, but it's a compound number. And because it's 2% upon whatever the rate was before, and it's another 3% on top of that, it's not just the water, it's the sewer rate increases. And it's, I'm starting to see the impact, but we're also starting to see the impact within our economy. And when you look at some of these HOAs that are in all of our districts, they have to pay those bills as well, and it becomes more difficult for them, so then they have to raise the rates on the public. They get a water rate increase, and they also get a water, they get a hike in their HOAs because they have to cover the water tax. Then if you look at what's happening even with the golf courses, people have talked about golf courses here, you know, one of the direct contributors of failing golf courses is the expense, the operational expense. And the operational expense lies on their largest consumer, their largest product they use, other than individuals, and that is water. So all these things have a ripple effect throughout. I want to thank the Water Department, they're doing a very comprehensive study, we've asked for it, very detailed study, to look at where we've been in the last several years. But regardless of that, it shows you the impact of what people may think is just a minor increase, because these minor increases compound in the future, and they become an exponential number. And once they do, it makes it very difficult for people to be able to pay those bills. Likewise, I know that the City of Phoenix had a, the largest tax, property tax increase in its history just a couple of years ago. What's going to happen, I just want to make sure that the public understands how this works. The elected bodies, when they pass these tax increases, the real effect doesn't happen for at least 18 months, because in 18 months, the valuations start to catch up. So as you start seeing your nest egg that you've built up for your retirement get larger, the government starts taking more and more from you on a yearly basis through a property tax increase. So you combine water rate increases, property tax increases, all these fee increases, they start to pound down, especially on the middle class, the working-class individuals that can barely afford it, barely make it, because they're not seeing that level of growth in this economy, because they're just not. We're not seeing that kind of income growth in that grouping. And what ends up happening is it becomes more difficult for them to survive and be able to put their kids through school. All these fees, all these taxes, all these things end up becoming a detrimental impact on working-class families. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Zizil. Councilman Okowski, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I also want to invite everyone out to Metro Center on Saturday, October 7th, for the kickoff of the GAIN events. It's so much resources out there. If you're a part of a neighborhood association, a block watch, and you want to get some resources, what a great opportunity to come together and see all the different resources that the City of Phoenix has and all the great organizations that are out there. Also, GAIN Day is Saturday, October 21st, so on that Saturday, October 21st, you'll see all kinds of GAIN events going throughout the City of Phoenix. I also like to invite people out to Caesar Chavez Park on October 7th. We're going to have a family fishing fun day that we're partnering up with the county, and we're going to have a fishing day. So if you ever wanted to go fishing, you don't know how to go fishing, or if one of your parents is just too busy to go out there, just come on down, and we'll teach you how to fish. The poles are free, the baits are free, everything's free, and it's a great opportunity for individuals that have never gone fishing before to have that great opportunity to go fishing. That's at Caesar Chavez Park, that's on October 7th, that's a Saturday. If you want more information, you can look it up on my Facebook, or you can call my office. Also, this past Saturday, Phoenix was awarded with nine different Environmental Excellence Awards. And in District 3, we had three of those sites were actually in our district. Huelo Viejo Fields and Food Hub got the award. 27th Avenue Phoenix on Campos Facility got an award, and also Booming Canopy Shelter and Shade for Pierce Street got the award. So congratulations to those three sites in District 7. Also, Fall Into Fitness is a program at Margaret Hands Park. It's a 10-week fitness program that starts October 3rd all the way until December 5th. So if you want to get in fit, and you want to come down and learn about all the great different programs on how to get fit, come out to Margaret Hands Park. And for the next 10 weeks, we're going to have all kinds of fun. And I also want to encourage all the block watch leaders that are out there in groups that we have workshops. One of the things that we've been hearing is, we want to learn more about the process and how to get these grants, how to make sure that the funding comes out to our neighborhoods or our part of town. So basically, the Neighborhood Block Watch Grants, application seminars are going to start Tuesday, November 7th, at 10:00 a.m. at Devonshire Senior Center, and also November 28th at 10:00 a.m. at the South Mountain Community College Library. So if you want more information, you can call our office, or you can get ahold of your block watch, and make sure that you guys get informed and fill out those grant monies. There's all kinds of opportunities and good things out there for our neighborhoods. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, one other thing, Mayor, I forgot. This is the Fourth Annual Phoenix Firefighters Career Day. So if you ever wanted to become a firefighter, and you wanted to know opportunities or what it takes to be a firefighter, we're going to have Saturday, October 14th at 7:00 a.m., the first 150 individuals to apply will go through this regional training academy for individuals that are interested in being firefighters. So remember, that's an important date, Saturday, October 14th at 7:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Okowski. Councilman Valenzuela, any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to invite everyone out to the next job fair that we have in District 5, September 30th. Excuse me, I apologize. Wednesday, October 11th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. at the Maryville Community Center. We do these job fairs at least quarterly at the Maryville Community Center. We have a great group of companies, large and small, those who do business in the Maryville community. And of course, you know, they work with people who live in the Maryville community and really give them a chance to apply, obtain employment, and also get help on resume writing, those types of things. There is a veterans component. Many people don't realize that a third of all veterans who live in the entire West Valley actually reside in Maryville. And so there is a Maryville component to that. So again, Wednesday, October 11th, from 9:00 to 12, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, at the Maryville Community Center. I also would like to say that, you know, I'm very excited that we finally launched Code Phoenix last week. Every job in America is a tech job in some way, shape, or form. And so we must continue to support our education system, all of our schools. We can do more, we can work together to find opportunities for our youth, expose our youth to, you know, technology, coding, help equip them with tools that are needed to compete in the 21st century economy. One in four schools in Arizona, and we are actually on par nationally, one in four schools nationally offer some form of computer science. Obviously, there's a gap there. Just as we speak, there are 10,000 computing jobs that are available in Arizona. That number is going to continue, and we have to get ahead of that. You know, the City of Phoenix is obviously the fifth-largest city in the country, but when you think about the fifth-largest city in the country providing coding, technology classes to our youth, ages 4 to 17, you know, think about that. We are offering these classes, making them accessible, equitable, and free to all of our students. And how did we get there? It's through a public-private partnership with the Arizona Community Foundation between the City of Phoenix and the Arizona Community Foundation with the help of the Phoenix IDA. We were able to raise $500,000 so far in private funds to help with this program. Of course, those fundraising efforts will continue. And as we speak, 12 locations citywide, throughout the city, have been opened, offering these classes. That will eventually grow as, that'll eventually grow to far more than 20. This is not only, you know, something for our libraries, it's for our parks and wrecks as well. So we're very excited about that. If you want more information, if you want to know where they're being offered at this time, you can log on to the City of Phoenix website, phoenix.gov, and just search Code That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. If there's no other final comments by members of the city council, we'll move forward with today's agenda. Agenda item number one is a 2016-17 Year End General Fund Budget Results and 2018-19 Budget Efficiency Reduction Plan. Although first, I should ask, there is a call for executive session. I apologize, I shouldn't have done that. Vice Mayor, is there a call for executive session? Please, let's do that first, I'm sorry.
Motion for executive session. Mayor, in accordance with the properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council, pursuant of the Arizona Revised Statute, Section 38-431.02.A, meet in executive session on Tuesday, October 24th, my birthday, 2017, at 1:00 p.m. in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
There's a motion, there is a second. We'll table in the discussion of cake for later time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The call for executive session passes unanimously. Mr. City Manager, in addition to item number one, do you have any other reports or budget updates? So let's go right on to number one, 2016-17 Year End General Fund Budget Results and 2018-19 Proposed Budget Efficiency Reduction Plan. I'll hand it over to you, Mr. City Manager, to introduce our Budget and Research Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. So the story we have today is one of continued preparation yielding positive results. Starting last February, we began talking together about what we needed to do to prepare for 2019. And the council passed a responsible balanced budget for 2018 this year, and we immediately began working ahead of schedule to look under every cushion and tighten up everywhere possible to prepare for the 2018-19 budget. I just want to take a minute and commend our department heads here at the city for the work they have done with the staff and with you, Mayor and council, under your leadership for the serious approach to tightening up spending. This chart is just an illustration of what's happened in the last 10 years. The left side shows the general fund budget. That's the budget that supplies police, fire, parks, libraries with funding. And it shows across the years, starting in 2007, 2008, all the way through this past year that we're just talking about. So this is 10 budget cycles. And what this shows is the amount of money we spend in the general fund that is not pension. So this is the amount of money you could argue we have more control over, because pension is really a function of an actuarial and market conditions and bills that are sent to us by the pension funds. But if you take that out and you look, what's happened is that we have dropped non-pension spending in the general fund by over $110 million over 10 years. Now certainly on the far-left side, '07, '08, '09, '10, '11, that tracks the recession when the council is faced with very difficult decisions to cut programs. We reduced our employee count at the city from 17,000 to 14,000, and you see that. But the last five budget years, going toward the right, have stayed almost exactly the same. Even with rising costs, we have had to restore compensation to employees, and rightfully so, this council made that decision. The prices of things go up, gasoline, commodities, all those things go up. But what we've done at the city is we have clamped down on spending that is not pensions, and we have hit this mark. And I think this is a remarkable thing that I want to commend our employees for and thank you for your leadership on. But what this says is that we have to continue to tighten that spending, but there's not a lot of slack left in the system. Today, what we want to report to you is those results from 2016-17, what we're doing right now, and the actions that we're already taking for next year, which are very important. We'll discuss the efforts to target, this summer, we targeted administrative spending again, and we'll recommend an early action for 2018-19 that will give us a head start of several million dollars on next year's budget. It tightens up our vacancies further, and it identifies some areas for potentially more savings, but that will need much more discussion. And so our Budget and Research Director, Jeff Barton, is here, and he'll walk you through those three components of what we have today, and then there is some action to request at the end. Mr. Barton?
Mayor, members of the council, good afternoon, and it's a pleasure to be here today. I'm actually excited to have an opportunity to present good news, instead of usually me bringing down your mood. So as we look forward, we're going to start, the first phase of this presentation will focus on our general fund resources. So if you look at, if you look at the chart before you, you can see that for last fiscal year, our resources actually exceeded our estimate by about $300,000. That's a variance of 200ths of a percent, so extremely accurate. Councilman Waring and I joke about this all the time, there's a little bit of skill and a little bit of luck involved with that, but I'll, but I'll take, we'll take credit for it right now. But again, that's extremely accurate when you're talking about a billion-two in resources. So when we talk about resources, we're talking about everything that comes into the general fund. So that means all of our city sales tax, our state shared revenue, our user fees, property tax, everything. It also includes our recoveries. And recoveries, just again, by way of, so we can remind you what those are, and for those watching from home, those are the recovery or the liquidation of prior-year budget commitments. We also include net transfers in these resources, and those would be funds that come into the general fund in, on behalf of the enterprise funds for work or services rendered for the enterprise. So an example would be aviation pays for its complement of officers at the airport. They also pay for their fair share of IT. And it also includes our fund balance. So last year's fund balance at the beginning of the year was $112 million, and you can see again, that, you'll see at the end of this, our ending balance was about $144 million. So we increased our ending balance from where it began. So then we go over to our next side of our equation, which would be our expenditures. And as you can see from this slide, and also illustrated in your report, for the year, our expenditures ended up about $14 million under the estimated expenditures. That's a variance of about 1.2%. I want to emphasize that from a best-practice standpoint, anything under 3% is considered highly accurate and generally acceptable. So again, we were well within that range as well. The majority of this salary, the majority of this savings came from salary savings. And again, just to educate those at home watching, you are definitely aware of this, but for those watching from home, salary savings is the savings that we accrue from a budgetary standpoint any time a position is vacant. So this doesn't mean that a position was vacant for over a year. This just means that from the time a position goes vacant, so someone retires or someone leaves city service, to the time it takes to fill that position, we're not paying an expense for that position. So we accrue some savings. So that's the large part of this. The other piece of the savings is actually came from departments that charge services out. So certain departments like law, police, Public Works, and Streets actually achieved a higher level of work order credits than was anticipated. That actually also contributed to our underspending last fiscal year. What I plan to do over the course of the next couple of months, as we go through our zero-based budget process, is really to hone in on both salary savings and those work order credits, to make sure that I can try to some extent to reduce that variance between year-end actuals. So as a result of the $300,000 in extra resources and the underspending of about $14 million, our ending balance was about $14.4 million higher than was expected. Instead of being about $130 million, we ended up the year at about $144 million ending balance. And again, I want to emphasize that that is growth over the prior fiscal year's ending balance or beginning balance for the fiscal year 16-17. Now, all of that is great news, so again, we ended the year with a positive of $14.4 million in our ending balance, and that's great news. But again, as I emphasized, largely, that $14 million is one-time in nature. And as a result of it being one-time in nature, it does not lend itself to being a long-term, permanent fix to our budget deficit that we're talking about for fiscal year 18-19. It does, however, lend itself to providing one-time resources that would avail itself to provide for one-time costs, specifically in the areas of capital repairs. We've got lots of facilities that are in need of repair. We also could elect to use some portion of that money to fund or shore up our pension reserve fund that you created last fiscal year through our budget process. And it could also be used to shore up any other infrastructure needs that we may have throughout the city that become identified over the course of the next couple of months. So as we look ahead, again, given our performance for the year, at this point in time, we don't recommend any adjustments to our current year revenue forecast, but we continue to monitor that, and as we go through our zero-based budget process, we also look at our revenues. So in the next couple of weeks, in early October, my staff and all fiscal staff across the city will be engaged in our perpetual battle of who's right, who's wrong, in terms of where the budget ends up. So we will begin our zero-based budget review, and that will last between October and December. During that process, again, I am committed to reestimating our true vacancy rate to really determine what I think our salary savings level should be, to, again, minimize that variance at year-end. I'm also committed, and we're committed, as you committed to a few months ago, is to refine our pension estimates. And that will largely depend upon what we set as an amortization period, or what you select as an amortization period for PSPRS. So that will also come back to you. Once those things are done, we can come back to you in late January with an early status, so just giving us a better idea of where we think fiscal year 18-19 could land. But by way of background, again, the five-year forecast that we presented last year in February, it did project a potential deficit of between $43 and $64 million. In light of that potential shortfall, the city manager alluded to earlier in his opening remarks, that over the course of the summer, he challenged every general fund department to identify administrative savings. And those administrative savings, the key component of that was that they could not impair or impact negatively existing services to our residents. And so we went through a series of reviews to try and identify those. And so what we have before you today, we're seeking your approval to approve $10.7 million in these early administrative efficiency savings. These are available for you in your packet, and for those watching from home, in Attachment B of the council report. Again, emphasizing that there was to be no impact to existing programs and services, so we largely focused on savings to contracts, savings in commodities, savings in vacancies, as well as making sure, as many of you have asked in the past, to ensure that the general fund is only paying for its fair share. So looking to make sure that all of our cost allocations are accurately portraying what they should. This $10.7 million in administrative efficiencies can be broken down into two categories. One category is the one-time savings, and another piece is the ongoing savings. So we'll walk through that real quickly. So the first piece of the $10.7 million is, has been identified as one-time savings. It totals about $4.1 million. It totals about $4.1 million. And again, these savings really are the result of things that we've identified that we can get rid of next fiscal year, but some of those things we can actually implement in the current fiscal year and save some money this year. So that totals about $4.1 million. And these things do lend themselves to what we talked about just a few seconds ago, capital repairs, pension reserve fund funding, as well as infrastructure needs. Again, I wouldn't necessarily recommend using this $4.1 million as a means to shore up our potential shortfall. But they do avail themselves for one-time issues. As far as the ongoing savings is concerned, $6.6 million of the efficiencies avail themselves for ongoing budgetary savings. And these things have the impact of reducing our potential shortfall from $43 to $64 million down to $36 to $57 million. With that, I'll turn it over to the city manager, who will discuss a couple of other items that could lend themselves to additional budgetary savings.
So these items, as Jeff said, are things that don't affect services, that are rightsizing vacancies and those sorts of things in city operations without affecting the services we provide to the public. There were a couple of things identified by staff as potential, but they... The first one could potentially affect services, and the second one just needs more discussion. So the Parks Department has been approached about the Papago Baseball Complex, which is located at 64th Street and McDowell by the city of Scottsdale, about the potential of taking that over for use by their contractor, baseball contractor. And they would take that over and take all maintenance costs from us on that. And that's about $1,200,000 per year. That clearly needs much more conversation and discussion. It is an option. It would need to come through the Parks Arts and Education Subcommittee for that, but that is one potential that could be a general fund savings. The second one has to do with the block watch administration. In 1993, I think, Proposition 301 was passed to fund police officers and firefighters. 5% of it goes to block watch grants, and those grants are allocated every year. They come through the Public Safety Subcommittee, and the full council allocates them. There's a Neighborhood Block Watch Grant Committee that does the vetting of that. We have four staff in the police department whose complete job, they're civilians, is to work with that committee, manage the grants, make sure that the money is spent appropriately. Their whole time is dedicated to this grant program. We would like to consider having those staff funded from the proceeds of the Neighborhood Block Watch Grant portion of Proposition 301. It would be an appropriate expenditure. There is a large fund balance that has been generated over the past 25 years in that fund that could handle this, but it's something that should be discussed with the Neighborhood Block Watch Grant Board, come through the Public Safety Subcommittee of the City Council. So we're not recommending either one of these today. We just wanted to let you know there are still some things out there that we could do to continue to chip away at the potential budget shortfall for 18-19 as we go forward. But the requests today, these two, of course, would total an additional general fund savings of 1.7. Should the council approve them, choose to do that. We further would ask today for the adoption of the budget calendar. This is something you do every year. What it does is establishes dates for Jeff to meet that comply with state law and the city charter. So this just lays out the budget calendar that begins in February and concludes on July the 5th. And that calendar, adopted by the council, then gives guidance to us as we have dates to meet to hit our public involvement. And then finally, we leave with you a request to approve the savings as proposed to you in Attachment B of $4.1 million one-time, $6.6 million ongoing. It would eliminate $12.4 FTE, full-time equivalent vacancies, and as I said, the budget calendar. Mayor, we'd be happy to answer questions and have further conversation.
Thank you very much, City Manager. I'll now turn to see whether there's just a motion a second, and then we can take any questions or comments you have. Vice Mayor?
I move the motion of approval of the $4.1 million savings in 17-18 and $6.6 million savings in fiscal year 18-19. It includes the elimination of $12.4 FTE, all vacant. I do have a question about the calendar.
Okay.
We can do the approval and then discuss it.
Okay, so does the motion include the calendar?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is in favor of staff recommendation. Is there a second? There is a second. Vice Mayor, any questions?
My understanding about the calendar was that we were going to move the calendar further up into the fall season and have dialogues with the community now or roll out in October or November. I don't see those dates.
So Vice Mayor Pastor, the plan that we're working on now is we're developing, we're currently developing some additional literature for our community, an easier-to-read budget document that we've been working on for a few months. Then the other piece that we've been working on is an educational component to our budget process. As far as what we're planning is later this fall, we plan to go out to the community or start with a small focus group and work through them what their concerns are with our budget process, as well as get feedback on where they'd like to insert themselves into the budget process.
I should just, first, we're going to come talk with you all about what those documents look like before we would go to that.
And then we are working on potential different outreach components. Some of this is Balancing Act, is a software program that's out there, and I'd recommend that you look at it. It's something that many other agencies or cities have used to actually go through their budget process. It gives the citizens an opportunity to weigh in on where they'd like to see their budget spent and how they'd like to see their budget spent. As far as the actual presentation of the budget or the forecasting of our 18-19 budget process, we really can't back it up much further than where we are from that perspective. We really have to wait until we get three months' worth of actual revenue and expenditures before we start projections, and then that process just takes, it takes a couple of months to actually go through that. But it's really, what we're looking at is a more educational component on the front end of our budget process.
Okay. And then I have a second question.
Please.
And it's, if you could back up the slide right there. When we discuss the Papago Baseball Complex, I have some concern, not necessarily about what would we like to do with the Papago Baseball Complex, but that complex is used... If that's anything, that's the one complex that's used consistently because of the baseball fields. So my question to that is if we are starting to... I don't even know how to say it. Do a private-public partnership and access to the baseball fields, there will no, there won't be any access to the baseball fields, as I understand it. Then what are we going to do in order to provide access to the public in order for them to continue using the baseball field since we, I feel like constituents pay for it?
Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Pastor, that's exactly the questions that we need to process through with the Subcommittee and then the full council, because we need to... Those are definitions that would go into how this would be negotiated. What is the access for the fields? What does that do to how much cost gets taken off the city's books? All those questions are really important and have to be answered. And that's why there's, we're not even able to deal with that today. But we just wanted to let you know that's something that's been identified, but it needs a lot more work with the council and the community before that would be something we would recommend.
And let me just put this caveat that I do not, I prefer... No, I don't prefer. I would like whatever we decide to happen within Phoenix, so they stay within Phoenix and they don't go outside to other cities to use facilities. So.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the motion is to support staff recommendation. I'll turn to the council members. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Williams, please.
Want to make sure that you are really communicating closely with all of the departments when it comes to upgrading the buildings and the vehicles. We do not want another library situation. And I have heard from a couple of different areas that there are some severe needs out there, and I hope you bring those forward to us one of these days to tell us where the money's going to be spent and the priority and when we can expect to see it accomplished.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, that's... Mr. DeHoney is leading an effort to pull all together what those deficiencies are in our maintenance. And that's what the $14.4 million that Jeff started at the beginning with of extra fund balance and this one-time savings of $4.1 million and any other one-time resources we can find, we want to pull those together this fall and have a capital needs discussion fully with the city council so that we can make, you can make decisions with full information of resources and need, and we can balance those.
All right, thank you very much. Other comments or questions? Councilwoman Sisio, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things right off the bat. The first, the $1.2 million for the baseball fields. I want to thank staff. We've worked on this for almost two years now, 18 months since 2016 with the Giants. And we're going to be landing them here real soon, so I think that's going to be a big coup for us. We've been working with the city of Scottsdale. And I do want to thank the Parks Department. Not only is that a big coup for us here to move them here, but also the $1.2 million in savings that we're going to be able to get from that. A lot of people seem to think, you know, we've been working on the whole Papago area with ASU turning over Phoenix Municipal to Arizona State University, the golf course, others. And you end up doing that, I mean, when you control it all, you only get so much from an area. That's all you get. And people tend to think of assets as these things that are moneymakers for government, when in fact, what most people view as an asset could also be a liability when you're dealing with government because of the expenses that it takes to run those operations. So sometimes it's better to turn that over to someone else, like we did with the Phoenix Municipal, the golf course, and now the practice fields. Once we do that, we'll literally be a... I'd like to get an idea of how much money we have taken off our books just by doing that one area. And we haven't seen the Councilwoman Pastors issue about wanting to keep people here. They do stay here. Creates activity, creates life, you know, a life of its own in an area because you're able to interact with other groups. The other, when it comes to this budget, and I'm going to talk about it until we start heading in this direction, we are now seeing one of the highest growth times ever in the city of Phoenix. The city of Phoenix has more money than it's ever had in its history, and we're going to see more money in than its history next year alone. But the city of Phoenix is still going to be struggling with a budget. Until it fixes the structural budget, the structural deficit, you're going to see deficits year after year after year. It's not just about pensions. Pensions, without a doubt, are the top problem. But until the city of Phoenix adopts a strategic plan, a plan that makes decisions based on what is a strategic and what is not a strategic function, like ballparks and things like that, that we could turn over to other entities and save money on, we are going to continually face these deficits. And people are going to be getting less and less services throughout the years. So if you look at what the city of Phoenix has done, it's done the same thing as every other city and every government in the country and in the world. It's based a revenue-based policy. Revenue-based policies, anybody will tell you, increasing your revenue only does not serve the public, and it does not create a good outcome. It always creates failure. You have to look at outcomes-based. I think that the plan that Jeff's put together and the city manager's put in place moves us, although a small step, it moves us in the right directions because FTEs, whether you agree with it or not, and these are empty vacant positions, they still create a change in the dynamic of the structural deficit that we have. That's the only, not the only way. It's one of the major ways to create change here is to look at that. And until we get and start adopting some sort of strategic planning, you know, we can do as much as we want to try to increase revenues, raise fees, raise taxes, raise water rates. Eventually, you're going to hit a wall. You're starting to see rebellion. It's starting to happen in my district right now with water rate increases and property tax increases. It's only going to get worse, and you're going to see this rebellion from the public where they're going to say that they've had enough, and they're not going to be willing to support their government, the government that they're, that's supposed to be protecting them. So I'm going to be very favorable toward this. I think it's a step in the right direction, even though I'm not big on switching the $450,000 for $454 and using that into specialty funds where it should be a general fund operation. But I get where we're going. We have a problem ahead of us, and we have to fix that. And I'm very favorable toward the $1.2 million since I've been working on that. And then the other is the elimination of FTEs. That's what we should be doing and looking at those types of areas. But we need to go a lot deeper and really look at this in the future. Otherwise, we're going to be leaving, all of us up here are going to be leaving a terrible legacy for those that come after us. And I just don't think that's acceptable. We need to be able to deal with it today and make these decisions. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. Did you want, I don't know if you had any comments on this issue particularly as it relates to structural deficit statements?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Sisio, I agree with you that the issue here, and that's why I spent so much time on this first slide, is when you look at this slide, it points to one place where we've got to really focus attention, and that is what's not shown on this slide, which is where the pension costs are going. So what we have done is we have grabbed a hold of our costs and squeezed them as tight as possible. And we maintain those costs basically flat over the last five budget years, now into the sixth budget year. And so the difference for us becomes what the pension cost is. And primarily, the driver of that is our public safety pensions. The council has amended and reformed COPERS over the last five years, and that's paying dividends. We've got to see reform to public safety pensions, so that's really important. The whole issue about Papago is you are correct. Phoenix Municipal Stadium, we have leased to ASU. Papago Golf Course leased to ASU. That has taken some significant costs off the city's books. The third component of that, the Papago Baseball Complex, I think really it bring... The reason why we're not recommending that today is because what the vice mayor brought up is an issue that's important for the council to talk about as to the use of those fields. And is there a way to marry the cost savings with access? And that's what we've got to work on, and we'll work on that with you and your district and with the full council through the Subcommittee this fall.
Mayor?
Please.
Oh, thank you. And I appreciate that, and we've been working through that. I've got to tell you, the Parks Department here has just done an amazing job there. And the Parks Department, we are working through those issues. Matter of fact, we had Luis Gonzalez and others come to us on other league baseball teams that they want to bring here that we're going to try and meet with the mayor of Scottsdale because of what they're doing here, see if we could do a trade where Scottsdale's coming here, and these league baseball teams might be able to go to the city of Scottsdale. I mean, they need to go somewhere. It could literally bring in, if you look at what's been happening in Georgia and places like that, these leagues bring in mega dollars. You know, for those of us that have these kids that follow soccer, volleyball, and others like that, the amount of families that follow these teams is a huge revenue producer. And so we've been trying to see if there was a way to make that work here in Phoenix. It's not. But, you know, they're going to be right across the street. That's fine. It's just a line in the, you know, on a street. But the other thing I want to bring up too, and I do appreciate the work that they've done on that. The other thing I'd like to bring up too, you've talked about maintaining costs. That's good, but that's not the kind of restructuring that needs to happen. Again, that's all part of your revenue-based policies. We only look at the revenues and costs. It's more than that. You have to look at a restructuring based on strategic functions. If you don't do that, and based with the amount of pension costs that are going to be, and we're seeing this escalation, there are governments all across the country right now where pension costs are their number one, well, they are here too. They're a big expense. But they end up eating everything where there are no more, there's no more programming allowed. But again, the restructuring I'm talking about will have an impact long term, albeit on pension costs if we are willing to take those steps to do that. And it doesn't have to be done overnight. It can be done over a process of time. But you can't, you got to get, we've got to get past this idea of revenue-based and cutting because that just, that just doesn't work. And people will tell you that, that's, you need to do that. It's a restructuring that needs to happen for that to work out. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
So my understanding, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, is Maryvale Golf Course, Papago Golf Course have an agreement where there is access to the public. Public has access, which they have paid for. And so I think the conversation is, will they have access to... And so I think the conversation is, will they have access to Papago? And if they don't, what do we do in order for us to keep these teams in Phoenix, that these club ball teams that generate money like any other club ball, soccer, volleyball, that we want in our city? So I think that's kind of the conversation that needs to be discussed. I don't necessarily, you know, yeah, there may be a line and you can cross the, cross the street and it's Scottsdale. I don't necessarily want them spending money in Scottsdale. I want them spending money in Phoenix. Say it's philosophical or whatever, I want to see these teams very vibrant. I don't like when I have to leave our city and go to another city and spend weekends in that city playing baseball. I think that's a bigger conversation, and it has to go to soccer fields, it goes, it's all of it. So I think that's a conversation as a council, as we move forward on, on understanding access to the public.
Mayor, may I respond to that too?
You may, although obviously the baseball stadium issue, or the baseball field issue is not actually on today's agenda. I think the county, the city manager was just putting it on us on notice on the issue, but if you'd like to say more.
Thank you. I'm going to tell you, I totally agree with Councilman Pastore on this because club ball is actually a strong revenue producer. And if you look around the country, it is amazing, this is the same conversation we had with staff on this thing, that these club ball, the, whether it's soccer, volleyball, baseball, whatever it is, they end up becoming a magnet for everybody else and the people do there. Now, what I'm saying is that when people are playing ball and literally on the other side of the street or over here, they're going to steal, be spending monies and time in the other cities around you. That's just what occurs. If there's no access here, and if you want to work with me on this, I'd be happy to do that. I'd love to see a club ball come instead. Quite frankly, it ends up becoming a problem for the cactus league, but I'm okay with this. If it means, if you want to work, help me and work on this thing, I will do that. There's my commitment to you. But I'm going to need you to reach out and say, hey, let's get this thing fixed and let's change it to club ball. I'll be good with that, believe it or not. Because I know what they do and the amount of families that come into an area.
I guess what I am saying is it's not necessarily about club ball. It's if Papago, if we go into an agreement, then where do we provide access in another part of our city? Or where can club ball teams go and play within our city?
This is the best place, Papago. Again, I'll be happy to work with you on this. I'd like you to work with staff too on that and get, and Inger's in the room. Inger, I think you've heard loud and clear from a couple of us, we would rather see club ball at Papago Stadium rather than the Giants. And I'm okay with that if we want to head in that direction, at least as an alternative to the city of Phoenix. I would like to see us bring them back in and let them know, Luis Gonzalez's group, that we would like to at least get a proposal from them and see if that proposal can match what is being presented by the Giants. I would love to do that.
I just think we need to explore all options.
You opened up a great door.
Whatever the best option's going to be, at the end of the day, whatever the option is, it has to do with access, public access. So whatever is the best option we have, I think we'll go with it.
Yeah, let's make sure we get both proposals. Is that, Inger, you're in the room? I'd love to head in that direction, delay this with the Giants. And let's see what we've got because I think Councilman Pastore opened up a great door here, and I'm glad that there's others that would like to see this done on the council. And let's head in that direction and let's get two proposals put together, okay? Before we go forward with the Giants.
So if we could do that, and Ed, you'll know the timeline, you know that, you know the discussions with Scottsdale. I think it's with Scottsdale that you're having a discussion and not the Giants. But you're having the discussion with Scottsdale. I think if we have something, but you guys will know the economic, we will see it and the budget or what it's going to bring to us. I think all of us on this dais is just, at the end of the day, is if we take something away, where do we put it?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, the issue here is, yes, this needs to go through regular order of subcommittee full options. I think this is actually an interesting preview of some of the dialogue we're going to need to have about the trade-offs that come with the budget when we have these pressures of access availability versus cost savings. And those, that's the dialogue, that's exactly the dialogue we need to have, so.
And nothing happens until March of next year anyway, so we've got plenty of time to get another alternative proposal on the table. You've got the instructions. Thank you, Mayor.
So the motion that's on the table, this is a board staff recommendation. There is a second, there was obviously discussions of the item, that's actually not on the, what the motion is about. As the city manager mentioned, any official discussion, if you will, of the Papago baseball fields will go through the regular city council order. Councilman Gago, please.
Thank you. Thank you for that update, and congratulations on the accuracy of that estimate. There was a lot of interesting things happening in our local economy in the past couple of months, so the fact that we have good data is very helpful as we make these difficult decisions. This is the most important decision we make as a city council, our budget, and the public safety pension is unquestionably what's driving this discussion this year. So thank you for the information on that. As you talked about one-time funds, my top priority would be plugging that deficit in the public safety pension and making sure that we firm up that balance. Same time, we have a quickly growing city. I think the census showed we added more people than any other city in the country, and so we have to be smart and plan ahead. We can't just think about this budget. We have to think long-term about what kind of a city we want to be and make smart investments. Technology and innovation has to be at the top of our list, especially given the geography of our city. We are just so much larger than many of our other peer cities that if we can have technology to make sure we have eyes and ears on the safety side, we're even, we can't have police officers and that we're managing our water assets as efficiently as possible, streets, et cetera. We really need to continue to be innovative with this very difficult challenge that's before us, a quickly growing city, but a very, very large one. And we have to be cognizant that although the recession may have lifted for many people, we have residents, particularly those on fixed incomes, who are really hurting right now and want us to be fiscally responsible. We have found some good innovative solutions. One of the ones we'll be voting on today is money that's coming out of the city's efforts to take vacant homes and get them occupied again. That's a win for the people who live next door and a win for our taxpayers. There are still win-wins out there. We've had great progress at the Shen Subcommittee this year on moving forward with vacant land and approved seven pretty significant deals with city-owned assets. That again is a win-win. So there are still some win-wins out there that we ought to be looking for, but we need to be aware this will be a difficult decisions ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I should have gotten them earlier. Leonard Clark, did you just write testimony on item number one, up to two minutes?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Leonard Clark, born right here in Phoenix, September 22nd, 1964. I just, I'm very concerned, and I'm hoping it was a misunderstanding, but we were told earlier that we wouldn't be allowed to speak, so I'm thanking you for letting me speak. But on such a large item, many people are at work right now, and I just want to thank you. If you did previously say we could not speak, myself and Diane Barker, I thank you for changing your mind because this is the fifth largest city, and citizens who can't be here, we have a lot of friends who like the fact that we're here. But anyways, I'm, yeah, I'm highly concerned. The police pensions, now we all, look, I have friends on the left and the right who don't want any police. I understand. I believe we need them, but the police pension, you know, the Arizona Republic, excellent article by Dustin Gardner, somewhere reporting here, 200 million like cost next year approximately police pensions. And I'm just, you know, I know that Governor Ducey wrote a special gift to you guys. I really know. And I know there are some other cities like Bisbee, you know, South Tucson, but Governor Ducey wrote this bill right down the street so that we could have the citizens of Phoenix pay another billion to $2 billion. Now, I know the good council members, DiCiccio and Waring, have said we wanted it at least to be 30 million. They voted no on it. I challenge those two council members to keep putting this effort forward to make it a city law that this will be extended out 30, 30 years because we shouldn't be paying $2 billion extra. Now, this goes back to community policing and this whole state of fear that, you know, some of our public officials, I'm not saying you have generated amongst our citizens, that we must have police, we must have police, we must have police. Why not go back to a method that was very prominent in America? Go back to, like, we have the city-village method, you know, where we have volunteers. Yes, I know we have a police reserve, but I'm talking to city villages, Awatuki, Deer Valley, all of them. Before you're, you know, terrified at even hearing that, have advisors, police that would have groups of citizens doing this because we don't want to be Detroit. This is where liberals and libertarians can come together. And I'm sorry, the two conservatives on this council who say they're fiscally conservative, you make an exception for police because we must have police, we must have police, we must have police on every doorstep. No, it's not the way. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have a motion in, oh, Ms. Barker, did you just write testimony?
Yes, I put in a card. Okay, I'm Diane Barker. I'm in District 7, and I have another meeting I'm going to be late for, but I thought I'd stop by. And the reason I'm here, I am a concerned citizen, and I hadn't really realized this item was on the agenda, but I am in favor for the cost savings of $10 million. I very much believe that what happened with the city of Phoenix, it's bigger square miles than LA, it's huge, it's got huge problems. I think the present administration may be trying to handle it, but I think it's way, way out of what I consider reasonable access even into management. My access today is through, actually, Len Clark and I getting Cody to get you to listen to us. Now, the bottom line here is, is that I have been a participatory citizen. I did things just like even today, pick up a quota of litter. Okay. So people wonder why that's happening because we have people that do that. I said, well, where are I? I don't see where the city of Phoenix, the council, is encouraging our citizenry to participate. So many places I see where there's services, where I live, that the government has given, and the people don't appreciate it. They may say to me, I pay my taxes and I want our representatives to do what it is. But that doesn't work because the problems are too huge. And if you don't believe it, we are so thankful we're not Puerto Rico. But the dollar is changing. Phoenix, you, the dollar has not affected our gasoline, so we're in a status quo. What I'm saying with Councilman DiCiccio brings up two things. I'm in favor of a strategic planning. When he talks about protection, I might make you laugh. Are you afraid of Halloween and it? Because go see that movie, in the end, that clown that everybody is afraid, it's imaginary. The problems that we put forward, that we pay for, are not necessarily there, and I'm saying do more efficiency.
Thank you, Ms. Berger. All right, there are no other cards inside. There's a motion in favor of staff recommendation. There is a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Barton. Next item on the agenda is item number two. Item number two is a proposed downtown light rail guideway and station configuration. Mr. Manager, I'll let you kick off this items.
Thank you, Mayor.
I do see our friend Mayor Smith from Valley Metro is here in the audience as well. Thank you for being here.
Yes, we have several members of Valley Metro. We also have some citizens' transportation commissioners. I think Mario will introduce them. This is made possible by our Transportation 2050. Deputy City Manager Mario Panigao will lead this item with our staff. Mario?
Thank you very much, Ed. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the time today. Joining me at the table is Albert Santana, High Capacity Transit Director, Ray Dobalina, Street Transportation Director, and Maria Hyatt, Public Transit Director. And we'd like to present to you today on the Transportation 2050 Plan Downtown Rail Guideway and Station Configuration, as we move forward with the voter-approved Transportation 2050 Plan as envisioned by the mayor and city council to connect our city, provide transportation options for the present and future, and lay the groundwork for economic development. It's imperative that we keep the big picture in mind. The Transportation 2050 Plan both lays out a vision for a complete multimodal transportation system, and it outlines several individual projects that make up the system. So in carrying out those projects, we must maintain the discipline to keep sight of the holistic view. The discipline is critical as we plan the next wave of light rail extensions that will go south along Central Avenue, west to the Capitol, and northwest to Metro Center. Each of those projects is large and complex, brings its own unique opportunities and challenges. At the same time, the whole system must operate cohesively within Phoenix and regionally. And not only must it function as a cohesive light rail system, it must effectively integrate with the other transportation modes around it, like the cars traveling alongside, pedestrians and bicyclists in and around the stations and tracks, and buses moving people across the city. To function well, all transportation modes need to support one another as well as their surroundings. So we're here today to discuss how to best integrate the next phase of light rail into downtown and into existing transportation plans. Downtown Phoenix has made amazing transportation and economic development strides in a short time, and light rail has been a crucial piece. New light rail extensions will, extensions will connect downtown and to the south and to the west, making downtown the hub for the regional system. Under the direction of the mayor and city council, the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee, and with the assistance of our Citizens Transportation Commission, and with help from Valley Metro and input from many stakeholders, we're laying out a new plan for the configuration of light rail downtown. These changes are critical to ensure vehicular traffic moves as efficiently as possible. Light rail users have a great experience and the system operates as efficiently and effectively as possible. Albert Santana is going to take it from here to give you some detail about the proposed plans. Albert?
Thank you, Mario. Mayor, members of the council, as Mario stated, today is a very exciting time for us in the transportation world. As many of you may recall, when we did successfully pass Proposition 104, now known as Phoenix Transportation 2050, a part of that initiative was our ability to accelerate three of our upcoming light rail corridors, South Central as much as 11 years, the extension to Metro Center by three years, as well as adding a connectivity to the state capitol. And with that, it's really allowed us to start looking at, we've always known since the inception of light rail coming into the city of Phoenix, that as the system expanded out and the extensions would come together in downtown, that this is now an ideal time for us to take a fresh look in doing things that support Phoenix being one of the fastest-growing cities in the country, as well as our downtown, which we know is going to continue to bring thousands of jobs, lots of people coming to work. As the educational institutions in downtown expand their campuses, providing people with the option to get to and from their destinations is critical, and making sure that our light rail system and the extensions that do come into the downtown area also have a multimodal benefit, not only for light rail, but for our bus network, as well as for our auto connections with lanes of traffic, et cetera. So it's very important that as we move forward, that we start thinking strategically and moving forward. This map here shows you what our existing light rail system looks like today in 2017 that goes north to 19th Avenue in Dunlap and goes out to Mesa at Mesa Drive in Maine. And as we look towards the future into 2023, when these extensions are scheduled to come onboard, our extension will grow out to Metro Center to the north, Central and Baseline to the south, and west out to the state capitol, and then further east into the city of Mesa, with all of these light rail connections perpendicularly crossing into the downtown Phoenix area. So as we started to look at the future of the connectivity and the different modes coming into downtown, again, with all of the growth of lots of people coming into the vibrant downtown central area, we began to look at, the map here shows you what our existing light rail system looks like. And the first extension that will come in off the main line is the extension for the South Central Project, which will run along Central Avenue as well as to First Avenue. The next extension following the South Central Corridor will be our extension out west towards the state capitol complex, which also would be, per the current design, running on First Avenue and Central Avenue. And it also introduces two new light rail stations in the area on Third Avenue in Jefferson and Third Avenue in Washington. And so as staff began to work with our partners at Valley Metro, as well as having conversations in the community and with many, with other stakeholders, we started looking at, how can we ensure that the expansion of the light rail system is something that's done in the most efficient way, that provides flexibility for our passengers that need to traverse, whether it's making transfers to get to other extensions, but at the same time, having something that is multimodal friendly for people that are utilizing vehicles or walking in downtown. And as you look at some of the challenges that we've seen, lots of the proposed extensions are looking at using First Avenue and Central Avenue, as well as we do have stations proposed to be on different blocks throughout the downtown core area. So as we began looking at those opportunities for bringing in light rail, we also wanted to look at, how can we make sure we're getting to look at, how can we make sure we're again maximizing the multimodal connectivity? This graphic here shows you what the configuration would look like if done by the current proposed. And what you'll see is that it does introduce, as currently designed, several light rail turns across through traffic. Also, in the core part of our downtown, it offers up one station, that's the current station on First Avenue between Washington and Jefferson. So one of the things in working with our Street Transportation Department and others is looking at these areas here in the circle, which are the 90-degree turns along Washington as well as along Jefferson, and how can we work to try to make improvements to that, while at the same time maximizing some of the access for passengers utilizing light rail? So one of the things that's in this proposal is adding track between First Avenue and Central on Washington Street, as well as the ability for passengers to get off there and make a quick transfer to First Avenue. This also allowed us to eliminate two of those turns, which then would support through traffic on Washington and Jefferson Street. So as we started to realize the benefits of adding the station at Washington Street, we wanted to see, is there a way that we can offer those same benefits for riders coming from the west, from the State Capitol, as well as riders that will soon be coming in from our South-Central corridor? So in this proposed plan, we looked at adding a station along Jefferson Street, as well as adding a station on Central Avenue between Washington and Jefferson. With this configuration, it does a couple of things. It allows passengers, regardless of which extension you're coming in, to make a quick transfer simply across the street. So if you're coming from the South Phoenix area, and you were looking to get out to the airport, you could simply walk across the street at Central Avenue and proceed eastbound on Jefferson. If you were coming from the State Capitol, for example, and you needed to head north, you could make a quick transfer at Jefferson Street and walk across the street and get on northbound Central Avenue. Again, the other part from the multimodal perspective, it does offer us good benefits in working with our Street Transportation Department. And to talk a little bit more about that is Ray Dolavina with our Street Transportation Department.
Thanks, Albert, Mayor and Council members. As Albert stated, the proposed plan presents multimodal benefits in the downtown core, and it also follows the city's approved downtown comprehensive transportation plan. The original design presents significant challenges for auto traffic east and westbound along Washington-Jefferson, given the slow 90-degree light rail movements across traffic lanes. As indicated there with the circles, it changes the patterns with regards to the paralleling of light rail. Additionally, it calls for multiple light rail extensions to use North-Central, putting light rail on Central Avenue every one to three minutes. These concepts would present significant challenges for auto commuters. So, for example, along Washington-Jefferson, the proposed plan allows for traffic, auto traffic to run parallel with the light rail by eliminating two light rail turns and reduces the amount of trains using North-Central Avenue. Both are major improvements, especially during special events and peak commuting hours. So finally, with the way we're showing the slide, as you can see, First Street becomes an important corridor for us. Additionally, the proposed plan includes improvements for auto commuters driving into downtown from the south. Between Jefferson and Washington, transit service only would operate on Central Avenue, which will allow for an enhanced traffic flow on First Street. This would eliminate current conflicts between auto and transit sharing the same space. So with that, I'll turn it back to Albert.
Thank you, Ray. And Ray? So one of the things that we began to look at is with the introduction of relocating stations into the complex area, as well as adding a station on Central Avenue, is that with the introduction of this intensity, we wanted to make sure that we looked at options that we maybe don't see on our current system, to ensure that we're doing so in a way that does not have visual impacts to the surrounding great buildings and facilities that we would have on Washington and Jefferson Street. This next photo here depicts an example of a light rail station in Portland, Oregon, that as you can see, if you walked by quickly, you may not have recognized it was even a light rail station, and really does not impede the visual effects of the facilities right next to the light rail station. They simply changed the grade of the sidewalk by 14 inches, which allows us to have the seamless level boarding onto the light rail system, which is a critical piece for our ADA community. So this is just an example. And so, as we began to look at, what could this possibly look like in Phoenix? This photo is if you were standing on the corner of First Avenue and Jefferson, and offers us an opportunity to give you a visual of what a station could potentially, again, look like adjacent to the Luer's Building. We could drop in a light rail station, again, without having the infrastructure that you might see on a current light rail system. With that, we could add in some trees to enhance some of the shade, and with having a light rail station, we hope to create an area that attracts more people boarding and traversing the area, which then hopefully helps to activate some of the surrounding businesses in the area. Again, I just want to make it clear, this is just an example that we wanted to provide of what one of these stations that we're looking at and introducing could possibly look like. A key component to any activity related to transportation is, of course, public input, and we have done some proactive outreach with Red Development, as well as with the Renaissance Building. We also worked with, had some comments with Arizona State University, who did give us some really good feedback about the importance of working with ASU faculty and ASU students about continuing options from an operational perspective for the one-seat ride that they have between the two campuses. So that's definitely something that we will continue to work on if this plan moves forward with our operations team. We also not only met with stakeholders, major stakeholders in downtown, but also community-based organizations and neighborhoods, such as the South-Central Collaborative, which represents stakeholders not only in downtown, but throughout the entire corridor. SOFO Convening, which is a neighborhood local community base, to make sure that we had shared this vision with, again, major stakeholders, as well as some of our neighborhoods and local community. As far as previous action, we did receive a previous approval from our Citizen Transportation Commission, as well as on September 12th, we did get a unanimous approval from our Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee. And so, I know this is, Mayor, members of the council, this is a lot of information, this is a lot of exciting things, so I just wanted to kind of, at a high level, in summary, really the goal of this is that in Phoenix, we don't naturally have a transfer station, a union station, like you might see in some major metropolitan areas. And really what this is, is an opportunity for us to make shifts to a couple of stations, as well as add an additional station to allow for seamless, easy transfers for our passengers, as well as it allows us for some light rail operational flexibility, because of the fact that we have one-way couplet streets in the downtown area. It allows us to have turnarounds on Fifth Street, as well as on Third Avenue, so that way, in the event, if one of our light rail guideways is shut down, we can still maintain light rail service in the core of our downtown hub. And then, to Ray Dolavina's comments, is that this is not only something that we looked at from a light rail perspective, but we knew it was absolutely critical for us to look at it from a multimodal perspective, to make sure that we had shared benefits. And with that, staff's recommendation is to add track on Washington Street between First and Central Avenue, as well as on Fifth Street and Third Avenue, and then the shifting of two light rail stations east on Washington and Jefferson between First and Central Avenue, and then the addition of a station on Central Avenue between Washington and Jefferson. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll now turn to members of the council, see if there's a motion and a second. There are a few cards from members of the community which like to provide testimony, and then we'll take any questions or substantive comments from members of the council. Is there a motion for members of the council?
Mayor, I would commend staff, they have worked on this for months, and I think we have come up with a good solution that provides access to downtown, not only light rail, automobile, but buses, it's all coordinated, and we still have the bicycle lanes. It's going to be the first time we have east-west, north-south intersections, and this is a good solution. I know you've worked very closely with the downtown businesses, the community, our PTA's been heavily involved. I appreciate all of their comments and participation. So I would move approval and move this forward if the staff's recommendation.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. I'll now turn to members of the public. Rick Namark, did you provide testimony on this item? Followed by David Kreider from Downtown Phoenix, Inc., followed by Sean Severoud. Rick?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm glad to be here to support this item. I'm here really in two capacities. One is Vice Chair of the Citizens Transportation Commission, which heard this item and discussed it in great detail and recommended approval. And secondly, as a co-chair of a Committee on Transportation for the Phoenix Community Alliance. My other colleagues had to leave because we're having a committee meeting this afternoon, so I'm here speaking on behalf of them. We also have been looking into this and spending time thinking about it, and recommend your approval. I want to do two things. Thank the staff, first of all, for coming out and spending time out in the community and with the business community on that. It was very important to get input, and they did a good job of getting that input. Secondly, I just want to lay out one issue that I think, and the staff knows about this, and Mayor Smith knows about this, that I think we need to pay special attention to. As somebody who rides south to east every day, all of a sudden, there are going to be lots of other directions that if you get on a train, it might go. So it might go south to south, or south to west. And so we need to pay attention to both the headways, in other words, how frequently those trains going south to east come, or my customer service will be deteriorated. And likewise, for other people going other directions. And make it clear to the customer how the transfer process, how the train identification process works, so you know you're getting on the right train, and this happens in other cities, it's not that hard. And finally, because the Bus Central Station is in a different place than the Light Rail Transfer, which is, again, not a huge problem, it's just really important for people on buses to know, when they transfer, they're hopefully only transferring once, and not having to get off at Central Station, transfer again, and get on their way. But, train frequency will be very important.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Namark. Good to see you again. How about Mr. David Kreider, should provide testimony on the item, and followed by Sean Severoud?
Thank you, Mayor Stanton, Council, and thank you for delivering such a valuable asset in light rail, that is contributing to a more sustainable and vibrant city of Phoenix. In the Downtown Phoenix, Inc. family, we have had over 100 businesses and community leaders who have been involved in reviewing the plan for the new, the new plan for downtown stations, locations, and there's a strong consensus to make the connections as proximate and seamless as possible. I want to thank Mario, and Albert, and Ray, and Maria, and Mayor Smith and his team for getting out there and really engaging in the community, and of course, our former Transit Director, City Manager, Ed Zirker, who knows a little bit about trains and buses. So now we're experiencing big changes in downtown Phoenix. It's becoming increasingly repopulated, with many young adults and baby boomers. We have a burgeoning amenity package of restaurants, live music, art, and sports, go Diamondbacks, and the best transit options in the valley, which are really extraordinary. Together, these changes are attracting many new tech, creative, and finance businesses into downtown, growing employment. In 2016, we had nearly 3.3 million light rail boardings in downtown, just extraordinary. My office sits right on the corner of Central and Washington, and every morning, I watch hundreds, if not thousands, of people coming off of their train. I actually have tears in my eyes watching that sometimes. Yes, we still need to accommodate commuters and event attendees who are arriving by car, that continues to be very important, but we need to make downtown work for the increasing number of pedestrians, bike riders, and transit users who are coming into downtown. We believe the staff recommendation is a good step in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kreider. Good to see you. How about Sean Severoud? Do you want to provide testimony on this item?
Mayor, Council members, thank you for hearing me today. I live and work both in downtown Phoenix, so I mean, for me, this is a no-brainer. However, I am trying to understand how this, these two missing legs of track were missed initially, because, just, again, because it seems like such a no-brainer, it seems to me that they must have been missed during the initial planning stages. Because it's going to take money to actually, you know, demolish these stations, build new stations, lay this new track, and I do understand that, you know, this is coming from funds that are already allocated towards the light rail, but it's still, it's still cost. So I would like to understand that, you know, and I'm the for-this thing from a conservative, but I think all sides could agree upon that, you know, when you have the chance to reduce waste and redundancies, that's pretty important. So I would just like to understand, because I still haven't received or heard any, you know, cost estimates, so I'd like to understand how, you know, it seems like this was missed during the initial planning stages, and then also what the cost would be regardless of, you know, whether those funds are already allocated.
Thank you very much, Ms. Severoud. Those are fair questions, so why didn't we do this in the original building of light rail? Mario, will you handle that one, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. It's a great question, and so really what, as Albert Santana alluded to earlier, when Proposition 104 was approved by the voters, and T-2050 came into the mix, it gave the opportunity to accelerate what South-Central, the South-Central extension, from 2034 to 2023, which aligned that extension to happen at the same time as the extension out to the Capitol. And so, by pulling those two extensions together at the same time, now we need to have an integrated plan, develop a plan for how those stations were going to be configured and built at the same time and dealt with altogether. So, the other piece of that question has to do with the funding, and so the, this actually is not going to increase any costs, this is going to be built into the design work that's already been approved by the council, and we'll move forward there. There's no demolition of any stations. What we're talking about is the shifting of planned stations that were out at, planned for Third Avenue in Washington, planned for Third Avenue and Jefferson, and moving those plans to stations to happen between First Avenue and Central Avenue. So, so those are all the components that I believe answers that question.
Right, so Ms. Severoud, a bottom line is, we would have needed these eventually, but now that we got this additional money to accelerate light rail, we need them quicker. So we got to move now to get this done, to make sure the system operates as efficiently as possible. All right, also, let's see, opposed, not wishing to speak, Santos Chavez, did you wish, are you okay? Not here. Devaney Price from Phoenix Community Alliance, in favor, available to speak if requested. Did she have to leave? She had to go? And then, let's see, how about Krista Sheppard from PCA Multimodal Co-Chair, also had to leave. Anyone else here wishing to speak on this item? All right, so the motion is in favor of the recommendation made by our team, and also Valley Metro Rail, CEO Scott Smith had also recommended this as well, so it's kind of a city recommendation plus Valley Metro recommendation combined. Councilman, please.
Thank you so much. It's an exciting day for us. Really feels like we're moving from a light rail line to a light rail system, multiple lines coming together. We're doing it in a very fiscally responsible way. I recently had the opportunity to meet with the Senate Committee in Congress that authorizes funding for capital improvement grants, which we are pursuing for this, and they remarked how frugal it was to not be building a $200 million union station, but to be using existing infrastructure. We are saving a lot of money with this proposal. We need to make sure that we do build good stations where people can find where they're going, can navigate the transfers. We want a system that is friendly to tourists, as well as people who use it regularly. I think we're making a good step forward today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of the council? I'll just say, I certainly am supportive of this proposal. We don't have a choice. If we don't do this, people coming from the south heading out to the Capitol will have to double back, same thing heading out to the airports, if we're coming from the north, et cetera. So this adds significant efficiencies into our system, and certainly makes a lot of sense. The issue that Mr. Namark brought up relative to Central Station, as she knows, obviously, you know, we, in the past, thought that that piece of real estate would be better dealt with as a developed piece of real estate, we're going to have to do some major changes to the bus system, and I'm guessing that is going to happen eventually in the not-too-distant future, so we will be reconfiguring buses, and we'll make sure we do it as efficiently integrated with the light rail system. It's the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do, and we are going to, we're going to do it. This obviously makes a lot of sense. I really want to thank Red Development and the folks at Cityscape for being as understanding as you need to be. This will not be easy on your folks, your businesses, your customers, in the short run, but I certainly think it will pay long-term dividends for you. I also want to say thank you to the other property owners in the area. This couldn't be done without the support of those property owners, and it's not an easy decision, but for the, not only for the good of their own businesses, but for the good of the order, so that our system can operate as efficiently as possible. All of the nearby property owners have been supportive of this. That's a great thing for our community, so I'll certainly be supporting the item. Any other comments by members of the council? Councilman DeCecio, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is more in response to David Kreider. The only tears that come to my eyes is when I see the money being diverted from our streets, the crumbling streets that we have in the city of Phoenix, to a wasteful project like the light rail projects that we've seen throughout the city, and we're talking billions of dollars wasted, when our first priority should be our streets. Ray has done an amazing job from our Streets Department, Ray Dolavina, with the limited resources, and I know he's really been trying to up that up quite a bit, but our first priority has to be the repairing of our streets throughout the entire city of Phoenix. And then, if we have extra money to do things like light rail, that's where we should be focused on. All this money should be used for our entire city. All this money should be used for our entire city, throughout the entire, all of our districts and our streets. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Councilman Noakowski, please.
Thank you, Mayor. So by 2023, we're looking at the Capitol I-10 West extension. How far I-10 are you guys looking at?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, the Phase 1 project, when, when the, when the transit initiative was, was passed, the, the Capitol I-10 West corridor would go for two phases. The first extension would be out to the state Capitol vicinity, so approximately around 18th Avenue and Adams area is where we're looking at. Right now, we're still working with Valley Metro and the stakeholders on doing the environmental work to get the final destination. And then Phase 2 would take it from approximately that area out towards 79th Avenue and the I-10 freeway.
All right, thank you. The other thing, too, is that we talked about between Washington and Jefferson on Central Avenue, that you all were going to give me some renderings on how we were going to keep the, the festivals, and how we can coexist with the ice skating and all that. I never seen any of those renderings. I'm not sure if you have them or not have them, or...
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, we're working with Valley Metro and their consultant right now to finalize those, but we can set up a briefing with you, I believe, by either next week or the coming weeks, to be able to show you the renderings of what that could look like to be able to continue the event space, as well as the ice skating rink, and show you those graphics as well.
Yeah, because I remember back in 2007, we had all kinds of individuals protesting that we're getting rid of Patriot Square, and that we wouldn't have a town square anymore, and that we were promised that you can park to 747th right there in middle Cityscape, and that you can continue having events and community activities there. So I just want to make sure that we keep with that promise, and that we can coexist with the light rail, right?
Thank you very much, Councilman. Any other comments or questions? All right, so there's a motion in favor of the professional staff recommendation. There is a second. I guess we do roll call, in light of there going to be some opposition, but roll call.
Councilman DeCicio?
No.
Councilwoman Gallego?
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stark? Councilman Valenzuela? Councilman Waring? Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pastor?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes, so the motion passes seven to two. There be no further business on this policy agenda. This meeting is adjourned.